Let me start early.
Five thirty.
Five thirty. There we go. Mark the time. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. I now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Present.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment period for each specific item. The first item tonight will be a closed session. We will begin tonight's special meeting with four closed session items. Item one to item three, conference with legal counsel and anticipated litigation. Item four, conference with labor negotiators. Now before we convene to closed session, city clerk, do we have any requests to speak on those items?
Mayor Newsom, we have not received any requests to speak on closed session items.
Okay, then we will close the closed session and return after. Thank you.
Five thirty, there we go. Mark the time. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council's special meeting this Monday evening, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day. I now call this meeting to order. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Certainly Mayor Newsom, Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Present.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky.
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine.
Here.
And Mayor Newsom.
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment period for each specific item. The first item tonight will be a closed session. We will begin tonight's special meeting with four closed session items. Items one to item three, conference with legal counsel and anticipated litigation. Item four, conference with labor negotiators. Now before we convene the closed session, city clerk, do we have any requests to speak on those items?
Mayor Newsom, we have not received any requests to speak on closed session items.
Okay, then we will close the closed session and return after. Thank you.
We're now returning from closed session. Our next part of business is new business. Letter to California Office of Historic Preservation Approval. A presentation by Council members Fernandez and Sorko Kadiki.
Mayor, Mayor Newsom, through the mayor, I am going to recuse myself and leave the dais for this discussion.
Okay, thank you, so noticed. The recommendation is to consider and take action on our proposed letter drafted by council members Fernandez and Sorko Kadiki requesting a deferral of further review of the Baywood historic nomination. And before we start, we will open to public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests for public comment?
Yes, Mayor Newsom, if you haven't already, please provide me with your request to speak slip. If you are in chambers, we'll be tallying the total number of requests to speak. If you are participating virtually and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Now, as I said, we will be announcing the name of the final speaker, so if you intend to speak, please provide me with your request to speak form.
Through the mayor, just a quick question. Clerk, might we have the letter presented for the public while we have public comment, just in case anyone hasn't seen it yet?
Sure, we can do that. Mayor Newsom, I have a total of 14 requests to speak, so per council adopted rules and procedures, that would be two minutes per speaker?
Is that in chamber or all combined?
Combined.
Well, thank you. Yes.
Bear with me just one moment, we'll pull up the letter.
All righty, so if I call your name-
Yeah, just a point of clarification. So just to confirm after public comment, because we have the council meeting starting at seven, if we don't finish by seven, we'll bring this up at the end of the meeting for-
So my hope is that, right now with 14 speakers at two minutes, that's 28 minutes. We got you at 6:40, you have 20 minutes to have a discussion, and we'll see how far we get. Sometimes we'll let it go over about 10 more minutes, so you might have another half hour to discuss. Hopefully you guys can come to some conclusion and give us direction within that 30 minutes. Does that sound good?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All righty, so if I call your name, if you could please come up and line up to my right, that'll help us make sure we get through all of our public comments expeditiously. Our first three speakers will be Zen Simao, followed by Sean Farrenbrook and Jay Kur.
Hi, my name is Zev Simon. Yeah, I'm the owner to be first, so I want to tell you that I'm a builder. I have done three projects in the past in the Baywood. I've built my own home in the Baywood. There was never a problem with Baywood. It was a very peaceful, beautiful homes. Everybody appreciates the architecture. Until recently, a handful of people created havoc with this community. We are fighting each other, and we are trying to figure out what is the problem? There's no problem. On the average, I don't think that one home per year was even demolished in Baywood. And the homes that were demolished, to my knowledge, were all bad, inferior homes that had no architectural significance. The word historic is inappropriate here. I build a home. I build it to be historic? In 45 years, my home will be historic? No, I just built a nice home. And you can go and watch it, 236 West Third Avenue. I have nothing to worry about, but I care. And this whole thing is crazy, that a few people drove this whole neighborhood crazy. And as a council, you should, I don't want to say vote, or you should side with the majority, you're representing the majority of the people, not a few handful of people. Even though maybe it comes out from a good, I mean, intention, they're absolutely wrong. And historical injuries are a big problem for cities when it comes to property taxes and the city's economic viability. It's proven to be wrong in every place they use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Sean Farrenbrook, followed by Jay Kur, and Richard Delaney.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, in context, we're getting ready for this letter, just need a few things. At the 41-minute mark of the August 22, 2024 San Mateo outreach for the Parrot-Alameda intersection rework meeting, Lori Heater, a member of SMHA, she asked if historical researches had been done for that intersection. It's petty, but pay attention. On September 11, 2023, Lori Heater sent a letter to the city asking to see the permit history for 25 homes in Baywood. Okay, now it's a nuisance. Pay attention. She also, I'm told, I don't know this for fact, but I'm told that she actually-
We're now returning from closed session. Our next part of business is new business. Letter to California Office of Historic Preservation Approval. A presentation by Council members Fernandez and Sorko Kadiki.
Mayor, Mayor Newsom, through the mayor, I am going to recuse myself and leave the dais for this discussion.
Okay, thank you, so noticed. The recommendation is to consider and take action on our proposed letter drafted by council members Fernandez and Sorko Kadiki requesting a deferral of further review of the Baywood historic nomination. And before we start, we will open to public comment. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests for public comment?
Yes, Mayor Newsom, if you haven't already, please provide me with your request to speak slip. If you are in chambers, we'll be tallying the total number of requests to speak. If you are participating virtually and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Now, as I said, we will be announcing the name of the final speaker, so if you intend to speak, please provide me with your request to speak form.
Through the mayor, just a quick question, say clerk. Might we have the letter presented for the public when, while we have public comment, just in case anyone hasn't seen it yet?
Sure, we can do that. Mayor Newsom, I have a total of 14 requests to speak, so per council adopted rules and procedures, that would be two minutes per speaker?
Is that in chamber or all combined?
Combined.
Well, thank you. Yes.
Bear with me just one moment, we'll pull up the letter.
Alrighty, so if I call your name-
Yeah, just a point of clarification. So just to confirm after public comment, because we have the council meeting starting at seven, if we don't finish by seven, we'll bring this up at the end of the meeting for-
So my hope is that right now with 14 speakers at two minutes, that's 28 minutes. We got you at 6:40, you have 20 minutes to have a discussion and we'll see how far we get. Sometimes we'll let it go over about 10 more minutes, so you might have another half hour to discuss. Hopefully you guys can come to some conclusion and give us direction within that 30 minutes. Does that sound good?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Alrighty, so if I call your name, if you could please come up and line up to my right, that'll help us make sure we get through all of our public comments expeditiously. Our first three speakers will be Zen Simao, followed by Sean Farrenbrook and Jay Kure.
Hi, my name is Zev Simon. Yeah, I'm the, I have the honor to be first, so I want to tell you that I'm a builder. I have done three projects in the past in the Baywood. I've built my own home in the Baywood. There was never a problem with Baywood. It was a very peaceful, beautiful homes. Everybody appreciates the architecture. Until recently, a handful of people created havoc with this community. We are fighting each other and we are trying to figure out what is the problem? There's no problem. On the average, I don't think that one home per year was even demolished in Baywood. And the homes that were demolished, to my knowledge, were all bad, inferior homes that had no architectural significance. The word historic is inappropriate here. I build a home, I build it to be historic? In 45 years, my home will be historic? No, I just built a nice home. And you can go and watch it, 236 West Third Avenue. I have nothing to, I have no, nothing to worry about, but I care. And this whole thing is crazy, that a few people drove this whole neighborhood crazy. And as a council, you should, I don't want to say vote, or you should side with the majority. You're representing the majority of the people, not a few handful of people. Even though maybe it comes out from a good, I mean, intention, they're absolutely wrong. And historical injuries are, is a big problem for cities when it comes to property taxes and the city's economic viability. It's proven to be wrong in every place they use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Sean Farrenbrook, followed by Jay Kure and Richard Delaney.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, in context of getting ready for this letter, just need a few things. At the 41-minute mark of the August 22nd, 2024 San Mateo Outreach for the Parrot Alameda Intersection Rework Meeting, Lori Heater, Comment, she's a member of SMHA, she asked if historical researches had been done for that intersection. It's petty, but pay attention. On September 11th, 2023, Lori Heater sent a letter to the city asking to see the permit history for 25 homes in Baywood. Okay, now it's a nuisance. Pay attention. She also, I'm told, I don't know this for fact, but I'm told that she actually at one point was asking for all the permits across the entire city on behalf of the SMHA. This is now badgering. Pay attention, okay? I'm aware of one family on the 400 block of Fairfax that basically put up with the two years of this nonsense. This is just full-on bullying, okay? There's a trend here. If we don't manage this group, they're going to manage the city. They've shown a trend for this. You need to shut this down. So please send a letter to the OHP and ask them to basically, if not to stop it, to, you know, just to delay it as this letter's proposing. This is, this is good stuff. On another thing, I'd say on the money that was, let me give one more point to the badgering here. SMHA did not like the response of the city with the city's solution for historical context. So their answer was, let's go around the city again, resubmit to the OHP. There you go, it's another example, they're trying to manage you. Put them in their place, do it. And as far as the money, they've acted in bad faith. At this point, don't sign the contract, pull it. That money can be kept in the bank and you can basically hold off on fee increases for future, for future work. I think you get what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Jay Kure, followed by Richard Delaney and Lisa Vandevort.
Good evening, good evening, Jay Kure, I think you all know me. My biggest concern is that what's happening right now is just the tip of the iceberg. When anybody comes to you and says, hey, I want to do anything, I want to, whatever that it is that is they want to do to their home, it's going to go through a whole big history of, oh, I don't know, it must be historic and I've got to talk to this consultant and that consultant. And the red tape gets deeper and deeper and deeper. And it is administered by folks like the San Mateo Heritage Alliance, who are zealots in their efforts to quote, "preserve history." And that history is what they feel history is. What we've got in Baywood is not a big history. Page and Turnbull has turned out a document that is so full of errors that it's useless. You should go ahead and send the letter, we highly support it, and completely dismiss any of the negatives that are coming your direction about trying to submit a letter. You should be submitting the letter so that you can in fact control this process. That will be taken away from you if Baywood is declared historic, as many of the other neighborhoods which they say they're going after will be taken away from your control as well. Don't let that happen. Please send the letter to the OHP, at least it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Richard Delaney, followed by Lisa Vandevort and Tom Lees, and Jordan Grimes will be our final speaker.
Good evening, I'm Richard Delaney. I read the letter that's up there on the screen. I've received an email copy before.
Sorry, excuse me, the final speaker on this item will be Jordan Grimes. We have more speakers to announce after the, after these three.
My clock's still running?
All right, we'll restart your time. It is, I'm clarif-, we will get to your name, I'm announcing the last speaker on this item. So there will be no additional speakers after Jordan Grimes. Yes, I have, I have your speaker forms.
So, so we have 14 speakers. He hasn't announced all of them, he was just going to the very end of the list of who there is. So the item is the study session, this is the sole item for the meeting right now, for this special session of the council. There's one item. This is the item and it's on this OHP letter.
So basically, it was still open for more people to put their, their, their request in to speak, he's closed to the request to speak. And the last person that'll be allowed to speak is Jordan Grimes, but we will get to all 14 speakers. So if you've put in a request, you will be heard.
Yes, apologies for the confusion. We will restart your time.
There's no need to restart or to repeat what I said, I mean, it's pretty simple. Hi, I'm here. I've read the letter. In my mind, I've been to most of these meetings, I think all of them. I was at the last one, I thought we had a deal. I'm thinking that this is what we ought to do. It's the clear voice of the majority of the people represented, and I urge you to follow through and do what the letter says. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lisa Vandevort, followed by Tom Lees and Tasso Zagrafas.
Good evening, City Council. I come to you tonight not with a statement, but with questions, and I do ask you to please deny the approval of the letter to SHPO. Why would you meddle preemptively in an established state process? You are inappropriately putting the thumb on the scale to influence the state. Now is not the time. Why are you, why are you weaponizing rather than supporting historic preservation? Since when is trying to preserve a neighborhood full of 100-year-old homes a bad thing? It's about historic architecture, plain and simple. Why are you supporting Less Red Tape, a group that has done nothing but spread lies and division, including here tonight? Why the animosity towards the Heritage Alliance? They have gone to great lengths to collaborate with the city and to share factual information. Do you realize that by postponing the nomination, that you are sending the message that you do not care about historic resources? It's a key component of the general plan and the responsibility of a well-governed city. What do you mean by deferral of at least 18 months? Is that unintentionally or purposely vague? That could mean deferring it forever. That said, maybe that's the overall intent of this letter in the first place. Please do not approve this letter, get on with city business, update the ordinance and stop the madness. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Tom Lees, followed by Tasso Zagrafas and Dan Forster.
Nothing that any of the gentlemen, who I consider my dear friends, have said about the historic preservation is on, is in the general plan. Please follow the historic preservation guidelines in the general plan. I was under the impression that the city would embrace, protect and preserve its rich cultural heritage and honor its historical assets for future generation. The city is rapidly being torn apart, losing its identity with the loss of Talbot's, Trag's, Drager's, soon-to-be Hillsdale Mall, torn down and gone forever. Baywood, Baywood is a unique and one-of-a-kind historical gem. If preserved, this can be a huge gift to the city for future generations to come. It can be a destination and a setting for television shows and movies or commercials. The developers, real estate agents, mobile home park operators and labor unions will have plenty of opportunity to make money with Hillsdale Mall, Concord Passages, Windy Hill, fish markets and other development opportunities. Please listen to the past and it's begging you right now to save its gift to us for the future. It starts by not sending this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be-
I'm wearing a Danube Emperor's shirt, but I actually went to Little Valley High, Little Valley High Spartans class of 1982.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Tasso Zagrafas, followed by Dan Forster and Frank Elliott.
I'm here to urge you to honor the commitments you made to the San Mateo Heritage Alliance regarding the Baywood District nomination. A promise made by public officials, especially one forged through community collaboration must be upheld. Reneging on such a commitment not only undermines public trust, but sets a dangerous precedent that weakens the very foundation of civic engagement in San Mateo. The agreement between the city and the San Mateo Heritage Alliance was made in good faith. This abrupt request to delay the nomination review is a betrayal of that trust. This reversal sends a clear and troubling message that agreements with the city council are unreliable and subject to sudden unilateral change. How can residents or anyone seek to partner with the city if deals can be broken at a moment's notice? If the city can backtrack on this agreement today, what assurance do we have that future commitments won't meet the same fate? This is not good governance at works. By breaking your word and attempting to stall the nomination under the guise of local process development, this council is not only damaging its credibility, but also alienating the very citizens who seek to work with you for the betterment of our community. This is a moment of decision for this council. Will you stand by your word and uphold the integrity of your commitments? Or will you send the message that promises made by this council are meaningless? I urge you to reverse course and honor your agreement with the San Mateo Heritage Alliance. Your credibility, your integrity and the trust of the city council representing the community is at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Dan Forster, followed by Frank Elliott and Lori Watanuki.
I, I gotta admit, I'm a little bit confused. Promises made, nomination, I don't know what this is about, historic district. No one ever asked me anything. Is anyone going to ask me if I want this? I mean, I bought a piece of land thinking I'd build my dream house, and now I'm being told that I have to live in a 1940s house with a shared master bathroom, small closets, one-car garage, on a lot that could, it's an oversized lot, the house was built small because of land shape, the footings are slipping, I've lost five inches on the left side of the house. And now I'm told that I can maybe dig some pilings and pack something under it, instead of just tear the damn thing down, put in a proper, modern foundation with rebar and bolts and build a nice, proper house. Yeah, you want to save things, that's great, you know? My grandpa, my mom, my dad, they all saved lots of things, I got lots of stuff. I throw out my dad's stuff, my kids are going to throw out my stuff. Are you going to make people preserve their horse barns? We don't have horses anymore. I'm disappointed that I'm here fighting for something I thought you were supposed to protect me from. Isn't that your job, protect and serve? Aren't you supposed to represent me and make sure I don't get abused, that I don't get taken advantage of, that people don't steal from me? Keep a working, functioning police force and functioning fire department and all the good things the government does for us? And now I'm being told that, well, we're going to do what we want with your house? It just doesn't make sense. I'm, I feel like someone's stealing from me. You're stealing my property rights, I've got a small house on an oversized lot, I should be able to build within the specs of-
Thank you, Dan, your time is up. Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker will be Frank Elliott, followed by Lori Watanuki and Lori Heater.
Good evening, thank you, Council, for considering this measure. I feel like, a little bit like I'm in an alternate universe here. We all want to preserve and acknowledge history. We also, when we're saying the city council has broken an agreement, I don't see that. I thought the agreement was that we make this a local process and not bypass at the state level. This seems like a bypass. I don't feel like you will be dishonoring the agreement, I think you will be honoring the agreement if you send this letter, which is, let's keep this local. And I think we're hearing a lot about history and, you know, how great it is, we agree. It's about the process. We want this to be a local process, that we control locally. This is a symbolic letter to the state, the state will decide whether they want to honor it or not, you don't have to make that decision, it's just a symbolic letter that I ask you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Lori Watanuki, followed by Lori Heater and Randy Heater.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and members of the City Council. Lori Watanuki. I am against the City Council's letter to defer the process of the Baywood nomination. Please follow the State Historic Preservation Office's process for their nomination. There'll be a comment period to ask questions, and there's also going to be a vote. It's going to be a process, and the process has been clearly defined. Let the process continue and come to a decision. I hope the city will stay neutral and not send a letter to defer the process for another 18 months. The historic district designation for Baywood is an honor for the city. It brings homeowners access to funds to maintain and rehabilitate their contributor homes. Please do not delay or deprive the residents of access to needed funds. My home was listed on the National Register of Historic Places over a year ago, and yet it's not protected by the city's historic preservation ordinance. Please let us know what the schedule is for the update of the ordinance and preparation of the context study. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next two speakers will be Lori Heater, followed by Randy Heater.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, Council members. Here we are again, this is, I think, the third time that council members have proposed sending a letter to the state. Previous times, it was denied and determined to let the state process play out. The Heritage Alliance again requests that the city respect the state's defined process for identifying historic resources and to evaluate the Baywood Historic District. The city and the community, as Lori said, will have an opportunity to comment once the state completes its evaluation. The Heritage Alliance elected, acted in good faith with our pause at the request of the city last March. And told the city manager told us on November 18th that, no, we weren't getting an update in December, but this council was going to vote again on whether to conduct the work. So that's where I felt like the city may not be acting in good faith, we have multiple delays, and it may not even happen. That's when we resumed our process with the state. We started this process two years ago, and it's been a year since we paused. And we still have no schedule from the city for the historic work, and we have no schedule from the state, because given the delay, they've changed their process and they have two more delays. You know, I really hate this animosity and being demonized at every turn when historic preservation is supposed to be a shared value at the state and national and international levels. I wish the city could have helped avoid this by correcting some of the misinformation. And it does feel like we're in an alternate universe with the things that I've heard tonight. But here we are, and the city council is stimulating the controversy again, so I urge you to not send a letter, it doesn't look good for the city.
Thank you. And our final speaker in chambers will be Randy Heater.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Why are you sending this letter? You have no specific reasons in the letter as to why there should be an indefinite delay. Just vague hypotheticals such as, could inadvertently undermine our local process? We may not be in a position to offer comprehensive feedback. OHP and SMHA might limit receptiveness to alternative perspectives. Local opposition may draw unfavorable attention. A lot of hypotheticals. Sounds like the authors of the letter have taken the Less Red Tape correspondence course on hyperbolic fear mongering. Sending this letter to the states is an intrusion and an interference into the business relationship between Heritage Alliance and the state. Further delay will create harm for SMHA due to increased consultants' costs and additional work to update work already done. The authors of the letter make the claim that there's no urgent need to proceed at this time. No, there is urgency to conclude the nomination, because any further delays prevent homeowners of contributor properties from accessing the financial benefits the state has set aside for rehabilitation and the significant property tax reductions through a Mills Act contract. In 1989, architectural historian identified Baywood as an eligible historic district. Two other architectural historians have done the same, Page and Turnbull and Richard Brandy. It's clear there's still a lot of misinformation and misunderstanding about this process. For example, Heritage Alliance has no power to dictate what happens in Baywood, that's done by the city in the city ordinance 27.66. So I urge you to vote no to sending this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our virtual environment, our first speaker will be Dave. Dave, please unmute your mic. Dave, please go ahead and unmute your mic.
Hi, this is Connie Weiss. So, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Mayor Newsom and City Council members, truth matters. Baywood residents have endured several years of fear mongering and lies about what a historic district would deliver for the community. A great example is the gentleman who just spoke, fearing that his home cannot be changed for him to live in as he wishes. This is patently untrue, and it's one of, and one example of the lies that have been spread- and it's one of, and one example of the lies that have been spread by Les Red Tape. I hope he will contact Heritage Alliance for more information on all of the options he has, which even includes demolishing his house and rebuilding it. And the truth is that a historic district is an honor for the city and the community. Many financial perks are available to contributor homes, including a 25K tax credit for homes and repairs, as well as a significant property tax reduction via the Mills Act. Home values also increase, as we've seen in our Glazenwood District. Instead of the city looking to champion preservation of historic architecture, it has been complicit with the small group of people leading Les Red Tape by staying quiet when the city fully is aware of LRT's lies. The effort to submit this letter is just the latest example, and sadly, it is not the first time council has tried to intervene aligning with LRT's misinformation. Truth matters. Please vote no to sending this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rich Hedges. Rich, please unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. I was on the council when we suggested that, in fact, I'd made the suggestion that we update our ordinance on historic districts and go forward, because I thought a local ordinance would be the best and the most community way to handle this. And I'd ask, uh, the Heritage Alliance to pause what they were doing and not take two bites at the apple. That was the term I'd used. Uh, I am really troubled by the anger that's going through this community. That's one of the reasons that I asked for the city to go forward with this in our general plan. So what I would not be against tonight is us sending the letter, because I really believe that if we're gonna spend $500,000 to update the, uh, the heritage, uh, or the historical district information in our general plan, we really have to go through the city's, uh, ordinance to do this. So as far as I'm concerned, it's fine with me if the letter goes forward. I just wanna see this bickering end. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael Weinauer. Michael, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, mayor and members of the city council. I'm concerned and oppose this lever, this letter, um, interfering with the state Historical Preservation Committee's evaluation of Baywood as a historic district for several reasons. Um, mostly, I'm kind of at a loss why, why new council members Fernandez and Sorko Gudziki are attempting to interfere something that's a Baywood-specific issue. And, and why this issue, honestly, at this point, you've barely warmed the chairs, uh, on the dais, and this does nothing to unify the city or increase residents' trust in council. If anything, it takes it the other way, because the city is not acting in good faith, as I see it. Um, this SMHA agreed to that pause for a set period of time, and the time has elapsed, while at the same time, the city keeps moving the timelines out for execution of the ordinance update. So I really disagree with former council member Hedges' assessment that, and other assessments, that SMHA isn't acting in good faith. They are. The city keeps moving the goalposts and seems to have introduced a do-nothing option that's been rejected twice already. Why are we relitigating and legislating this when that decision has been made? And at the same time, I have really, really big concerns, as should you, because this goes well beyond this historic ordinance, is that this small group, Les Red Tape, is working really hard with professional legal representation, some deep pockets to influence council members and derail this process. Um, the main things there are that they're raising funds questionably, um, and they're not a registered political PAC or a nonprofit organization, as far as I know. They are engaging and influencing the state Historical Board. I have videos of it by speaking out against that directly in their meetings. And mostly, they're engaging in very ethically questionable and possibly illegal usage of AI and data captured from residents to submit emails to council against the submission and the ordinance update. So I would seriously question the credibility of any assertions being made by LRT, as well as the validity and veracity of any correspondence in support of this letter or against the historical ordinance, to the extent it appears to be former AI-generated.
Thank you, Michael. And as was announced, our final speaker on this topic will be Jordan Grimes. Jordan, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, council. I'd like to strongly urge you to sign and advance this letter to OHP tonight. I'll first want to say that the claims made by earlier speakers, that by sending this letter, the city is engaging and acting in bad faith, that the city is reneging on their promise, takes their gaslighting and projection to new and previously unimaginable heights. When the council approved more than $330,000 in January for local historic preservation planning, it was in the spirit of détente. San Mateo Heritage Alliance would pause their application to the state, and the city could work through a local process. Many of us were uncomfortable and concerned with this compromise, but hoped it would work. Less than two months later, San Mateo Heritage Alliance has abandoned that agreement, reactivating their application to create a historic district in Baywood. SMHA has very clearly been acting in bad faith. They have repeatedly lied, both by omission and overtly, on both process and policy. They have the audacity, when caught in their lies, to not only double down, but to accuse others of the sins they themselves have been engaging in and are guilty of. This whole charade has gone on long enough. Send the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
All right. We'll open it up to comments and questions from council. Who wants to start? Councilmember Fernandez, please.
So, I wanna thank everybody who came here today. This is a very, oh, sorry. There we are. Sorry. Um, I wanna thank everybody who came out today to take time out of their Monday, um, and their St. Patrick's Day, no less, to spend time with us today. This is, this is just proof of how important this issue is in San Mateo. Um, I wanna thank everybody who's written in or provided input on this letter to the Office of Historic Preservation. Obviously, this is a very divisive issue, and I knew that coming into council because this took up a lot of airtime in my, in my campaign. In my opinion, this is a very gentle letter. Me and councilmember Sorko Gudziki worked on a nuanced, on nuanced language that I believe was not, um, forceful. That was not what we wanted. Um, we're not frowning on the historic district occurring, but we are saying to OHP, please delay your process and keep us, the city, in the loop. That's basically the request we're making, and I believe that. Um, Ms. Vandenberg said that we don't want to leave the impression that we don't care about historic resources. In fact, the council allocated 300, over $300,000 to creating a local process, and I believe that we need to keep that local process local. We're walking a fine balance here as council members, um, between preserving historic resources and protecting property rights. And isn't creating the best policy about compromise? I truly believe that we need to advise OHP on our council perspective and pause the review as we establish this new historic process. Um, I also want to make sure that I voice my support for councilmember Diaz Nash as a colleague. In the last few days, the dialogue around this issue has turned divisive, fully acknowledging that I sort of reopened the Pandora's Box when I asked the council to consider a letter. I, I own that. But San Mateo is a resilient city, and beyond that, San Mateo is a kind city. And after this is over, whether or not we have a Baywood Historic District, or whether or not the council opts to send a letter, we still have to be neighbors, and I hope that we can return to the constructive, policy-centered dialogue befitting our community and our residents. Um, I believe in the merits of this letter, and I will be voting yes, and I encourage my colleagues to join me.
Councilmembers Sorko Gudziki.
Thank you, Nicole, and thank you to the public for coming out today. Um, because we have a local process, we wanted to make sure that, you know, the community has leeway to have, to have and give input. Um, the Heritage Alliance said they would not continue with submission of their application if the city moved forward with an expedited local process and updating our historic ordinance. Unfortunately, the San Mateo Heritage Alliance has gone back on their word and submitted their application anyways. While we are extremely disappointed in their actions, I believe this does not reflect the values of the vast majority of San Mateans, and I feel we should communicate with the state Office of Historic Preservation and let them know sooner rather than later that we have an ordinance and process in development, and that the state should defer approving the application at this time. I think it's really important that the community have input to express their feelings. I also just want to add that there was a lot of comments today about honoring commitments and transparency, and I think that, you know, when we came forth earlier this year, we tried to broker peace between LRT and the Heritage Alliance by moving forward with the historic ordinance, which is part of the general plan, but doing it in an expedited way and spending additional funding when we are in a budget deficit. And it was done in good faith with the assumption that we would move forward with the community process. This has now violated that agreement. And this letter, and we did work hard, believe me, we went back and forth, because the language was much more stern when I first wrote it. This letter is simply asking that the OHP include us in whatever communications are happening and defer the process while we work on a local process and get community input. And isn't that what it's all about, is having a community voice and community input? Um, so those are my comments. I know there's also been several letters about, about the 18 months. Um, I just want to add that we can actually do this, um, in a 12-month timeline. I put 18 months to give us a buffer as a community, since we're going to have community meetings. But if we need to revise the letter to say 12 months, I'm open to that. I've, I've always been open to compromise. Um, but I do think the state needs to hear from us as soon as possible, especially knowing what we learned today, that actually the application was resubmitted in December. So we didn't even get a chance as a council, knowing that, to, to really have a fair local process. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I wanna start with a couple of questions, uh, for my council members related to the letter. So my first question is, uh, why is it important to inform the city when the nomination was reactivated?
At least with the, with the appropriation that we made in January, that would have provided more context for that allocation. So that is one thing. And two, there is a, there is a time clock on the feedback that we can provide once a, once an application is submitted or repa, unpaused with OHP, as I understand it. And please, um, Prasanna or Zach, please indicate if I'm wrong with the process. But I believe that there is a certain amount of time or a period in the application process where we're allowed to have feedback. So it would be good to know when we had to start preparing that.
So what's the application is scheduled for a hearing in front of the commission. The commission, under state law, is supposed to tell the city, and then the city has, I believe, its 60 days to provide comment. Um, there's a, um, so I think that's one piece of important information. Um, the application, as I understand, is not yet complete, so that note, and has not yet been scheduled, um, accordingly before the State Historic Resources Commission, so that 60-day period hasn't begun yet. Um, I'll, I'll leave it there and see if our community development director has anything additional to add. No, perhaps not.
Nothing else to add? Okay, thank you.
We're also calling tonight St. Zach, Zachrick's Day, because Zach's gonna be, all of the items are in Zach's, so we'll, so.
St. Zach. Okay, thank you for that. Um, is, is it normal for a city to be copied on correspondence related to an OHP application?
Zach, you wanna answer that?
It, I, I think if, upon request, they can include us, but I, typically, the state doesn't include the locality in the initial application process. It's not until it's been scheduled, and then there is a, um, hearing and a comment period set that the city would be looped in. Um, we have asked, um, OHP over, since, um, this application was initially submitted and received input, but we've usually had to initiate the conversation to get information.
Okay. Thank you for that. Um, I, I appreciate everyone's time on this matter. Um, and I appreciate my fellow council members for drafting something in, in the spirit of compromise. At, at the moment, I, I still, I, I personally feel best about the city remaining neutral and not submitting a letter. Um, but I did also try to think about whether there might be, um, a, a different, uh, approach if the majority of the council were interested in sending a letter of some sort, because I do feel that there, there is some value, even if the city were to not necessarily take a strong position, one way or another, regarding this application, in informing, uh, the state that the city has begun this local process that we've invested in. Um, so, uh, I, I get the sense that there'll be a reply, but I did also just want, well, maybe I should ask you, uh,
Do you not feel that this is a way of notifying the state that we're doing a local process? Because I think I bring that up a few times.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes. But I think, I think, but it also has asks, um, and, and particularly to defer the application. And that's where I feel, um,
For the lo, so we can do a local process?
Yes. Yes. I, I'm, I'm aware. Um,
Which we've invested $300,000 in.
I'm aware of that as well. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I think I'm, I, I, I also feel that, um, I, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with, with, uh, leaning into, uh, this application specifically. I, I, I've, I've heard, uh, some from Heritage Alliance mentioning that, that they see the, the Baywood application as, as separate from the overall, uh, process that the, the city council is engaging in with regard to these historical, uh, you know, ordinance update and, and a context statement. Uh, you know, frankly, I don't completely agree with that. I, I feel, as has been discussed, that there was an attempt to have a compromise here, and, and I am disappointed in the Heritage Alliance's decision to continue with its application, because the idea behind what came before council was, uh, with that agreement in mind. Now, maybe that agreement wasn't signed, uh, in, in a binding way. Um, but, uh, basically, I, I, I wanted to share something, uh, and Martin, uh, if you wouldn't mind sharing it. I, I wanted to, I, I was envisioning what might a letter look like that, that didn't have a specific ask for deferral? And, um, I would ask, Martin, feel free to just bring it right up to the top. Um, because I, I have sort of track changes here, but yeah, it's, I, I just wanna say, what, what you're seeing on the screen is your words in this letter only. Um, it, I did not add anything new, but I, I removed the asks for a deferral and the notification in correspondence, and it, it, it just shares that we have initiated a local process and that we expect it to take 18 months. Um, I think there's a, a slight implication, uh, that, I think I kept in one of the, the sentences that refers to, uh, the fact that it could draw unfavorable attention. Yeah. We could even, you know, probably go through the
Right there.
Yeah. That, that it could draw unfavorable attention at the local level, um, which could affect broader historic preservation efforts in San Mateo. That is my feeling. I agree with that completely. I think if, if we were to go ahead with, uh, what council said it would do, uh, with the understanding that SMHA is continuing with its Baywood application at the state level, um, then I, I, I'm concerned that the majority of our conversation will sound a lot like what we heard tonight, uh, as opposed to what we were intending to do, uh, in the general plan process. So I wanted to share the information that we are undergoing this process and let the state decide.
Well, the state, though, fundamentally supersedes us, so they can take our letter and put it aside regardless. But if we don't ask for deferment, we deny the people of Baywood a chance to maybe fight this and to have a local process where they get to define and outline what they want to see.
Nine out of 10 residents, as it seems.
Well, I would say that the state process, uh, has an opportunity for comment. It has an opportunity for property owners to, to share protest, and I understand that a number have already chosen to do that, even though the application has not necessarily been complete. So, um, I, I personally am not, uh, am not interested in, in pushing farther. Um, if, if we wanted to, to send a letter, I think a letter that's just the facts, that, that, and, and allows the state to potentially determine if, uh, you know, upon learning this information, it wants to make a decision. Um, that is something I, I could support. Those are my comments at this time.
Great. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Well, I'll tell you, I haven't slept very well this weekend, because, you know, the last thing I expected was Lisa to recuse herself, and now that she did, I get two votes. Lucky me. I am the tiebreaker. I've got a lot of concerns from, and I'm going to look at both of you, both sides of the room. Not everything has been done in good faith. I do feel as though deferring this is, is basically being punitive to the Heritage Alliance, and there are things that I don't feel have been completely transparent and fair on, on, from either side of this. But what I'm really frustrated by is that we just keep spending so much time coming back to this issue. It's sucking the oxygen out of the room. I, I grew up in San Mateo. I have many friends who live in Baywood, and I look at both sides of this, and I have friends on both sides of this. And I'm just really, really getting frustrated, because I see it tearing apart a neighborhood that have been friends and strong supporters of one another for, for decades. So I, I do really appreciate Deputy Mayor's letter. I feel as though that's a good compromise. One thing that I also was, was talking to the city manager about was the timeframe of, I also don't look at a clock, timeframe of this. Do we, do we, I think, do we think that it's really going to take 18 months to have this process in place?
No. So the night that the agreement was approved, we're looking at 12 months, but I believe 13 months in total, 14 months if you have implementation. But coming back to the council for a final approval should be within 12 months or less.
Okay, that's another thing. Okay. I'm concerned, you know, I would have appreciated if the pause was at least held until we had another meeting. I, I also am concerned in that.
I just want to be clear. They didn't even pause. Lori Heater just said tonight, she resubmitted in December. So we actually, the new council, had not even decided if we were going to move forward with the ordinance, but the San Mateo Heritage Alliance had decided to move forward with their application.
Sure.
Through the mayor. Can I just make a suggestion? As you deliberate, I would wait for recognition from the mayor before interjecting in the future.
I would have given it to you. Come on. But yeah, give me a second to give you a nod, okay? All right. Yes. However, I can look at the other side and think, the use of technology to send emails, two every hour between 5:00 and 6:00 AM, three every hour between 6:00 and 9:00 AM, I mean, that, that, that technology may be legal, but the ethics of it are very murky. And do I have proof? I've heard, I don't have proof, but this, the, the allegation is out there, and. They're coming from, well, there's more, well, if that were the case, then every single Baywood resident is against this. I think what we should do is we should, what I, what I'm in favor of is, is using Deputy Mayor Lorraine's letter proposed. I'm also in favor of moving this to a point where we give everybody an actual vote. There's 444 residents in this neighborhood, and if each household gets a vote, it becomes pretty clear. And that's what we talked about.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry. We don't clap, but thank you. That's what we talked about when we passed, when we, when we passed and moved on with our historical ordinance, the idea that we're going to have consent. And so that's, that's where I'm standing. Where I am at this point is, is a different variation of the letter. Go ahead. Please.
I agree with you that this is a very divisive issue, and it does suck a lot of the air out of the room. And in a show of compromise, I would make a motion for us to send Deputy Mayor Lorraine's letter.
Okay. Go ahead, Danielle. Sorry.
I would like to send a letter to OHP, but I, I actually need more time to review it.
Okay.
Not to pre-litigate this for the next meeting, but.
Through the mayor, I would, I would encourage you to make your decision tonight, if you, if you can, because otherwise, that would mean bringing it back for another meeting, which is legal, you can do it. But that would mean another discussion.
Could we take a five-minute break?
Well, can Martin just put the letter up and we read it?
Yeah, fine. Someone read it, because the mayor, or someone read it out loud, just so we have it.
I also do want to be clear, because, you know, we're doing this process for the next 12 months at least, Rob, and so this will keep coming back to council. And I know this is expected to come back in June. And I do want to revisit the ordinance itself, because, yes, it's part of the general plan, but we did an expedited process under the guise that we were doing it so we wouldn't have this nomination go through.
What are we spending $300,000 on?
Yeah, so I think.
Literally, what are we spending $300,000 on?
I'm just pointing that out of like, we're going to keep relitigating it. So I appreciate the comments about sucking the oxygen out of the room, but the reality is, this is going to continue to be, you know, a contentious issue, especially now that the San Mateo Heritage Alliance did move forward at the state level.
That's interesting.
So just looking at the time, city clerk, would, would you like the city clerk just to read the letter out loud, so everyone can hear it? All right, go ahead.
You up for that?
Certainly.
Thank you.
The city of San Mateo City understands that the Baywood District nomination submitted by the San Mateo Heritage Alliance was recently reactivated. Considering the significant community concerns this nomination has raised, the city recently allocated funds to develop a local process for evaluating and designating historic resources, including updates to related ordinances. This initiative is intended to foster broader community engagement and build consensus around our historic preservation efforts. Should the Baywood nomination advance at the state level before our local process is fully developed, it could draw unfavorable attention at the local level, which could affect broader historic preservation efforts in San Mateo. Although we understand that the city will have an opportunity to comment once the nomination is agendized by the OHP, it may not be in a position to offer comprehensive feedback until our local process is complete, which we anticipate will take approximately 18 months. The city council believes that taking additional time for local discussions and community engagement could lead to a more positive and constructive outcome for everyone involved. We welcome the opportunity to discuss this matter further at your convenience. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Rob Newsom Jr., Mayor of San Mateo.
My only comment is, do we want to change the 18 months to 12 months? And Zach, do you think that's a realistic timeline?
I was going to suggest 14, but yeah.
Or 14 months.
The target is that in 12 months, we will have an updated ordinance ready for council action. The 14-month timeline, built in two months for staff to implement afterwards. So 12 months would be the policy window to go through community engagement, draft an ordinance, prepare the context statement, and then go through the public hearings and adoption.
12 months is good for me. Okay, so we have a nomination.
I've nominated 14 months.
With 14. Do you care?
No.
All right, I can do 14. So we have a nomination. Do we have, I can do 14. Can you do 14?
I think they have three.
I'm seeing three already for 14.
All right. Well, so I have a nomination. Do I have a second? I'll second then. Can we please call for a vote? Thank you.
Councilmember, or excuse me, councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember, or Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Sorko Gadditsky.
With strong reservation, yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. This closes the special session. We'll be, take a five-minute recess and open for a regular council meeting.